So it is Monday, June 12th, 2023. 6 o'clock PM, I'm calling our Select Board meeting to order, as well as will be co-posted as a Board of Public Works as well. We are being, there's remote participation via Zoom, and we're also being televised now on local cable, local access cable, as well as recorded for YouTube and rerunning on cable as well. So if we can start by standing to say the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the public who worship God, one nation under God, in the goodness of the Lord.
So I will look for a motion for the minutes, Treasury warrant and payroll. Unless anyone has any concerns about anything, I would be happy to do all, lump all three together. Or should we do it separate? Because they need to exclude themselves from, we can just, they can make that.
We can do it separate, just in case.
Alright, so I guess approval of Treasury warrant and payroll.
I make a motion to approve Treasury warrant 23-25 and payroll 23-PW-25.
Second.
Any questions, comments, concerns, Austin? Anything of major note?
I don't think there's anything that's been flagged by the finance on this one.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Alright, I'll take a roll call, Harry.
Yay.
Yay, and I recoup myself from the cable activities.
Ledger, I.
Galvin, I recusing myself from safe place.
And White Men, I, thank you. And a motion to approve the meeting minutes of our May 30th meeting.
Make a motion to approve meeting minutes, May 30th, 2023.
Okay. Any questions, comments, concerns about the minutes? Alright, roll call, Harry.
Yay.
Matt Sinjas.
Ledger, I.
Galvin, I.
White Men, I.
Thank you. I wanted to start the meeting just with a few comments from me. I want to say good evening, we have a great audience here. And happy June, I can't believe we're already halfway through the month of June. I want to congratulate all of our 2023 graduates, whether it's college or higher education, high school, middle school, elementary school, preschool. The end of one chapter kind of marks the beginning of another, and with that comes a lot of excitement and emotion, turmoil. So I wanted to acknowledge that, let you know, I'm proud of you. It's a big step, regardless of what you're graduating from. For our college kids, our four-year college kids and our high school kids, freshman year, COVID hit, so this has been a big, big change for them. So I'm proud of you. For any of our 18-year and older kids that are staying home, moving back home, anything looking to get involved, we are always looking for volunteers in town, whether that's serving on boards and commissions, just for different activities around town. Anything, please, please, please feel free to reach out to our office. Tamika will happily get you connected. I'd also like to remind everyone that starting this Friday, June 16th, marks the return of our Friday Concerts on the Common. And we will be honoring Ron Marsh as the 2022 Moses Howell Award recipient. The brief award ceremony will begin at 5:30 on the Common in front of the gazebo, and the concert begins at 6:00 with Paxton Crossing bringing the tunes, and we'll have, I think, fired up pizza food truck. The Woo Socks Smiling might make an appearance, I've heard. Mrs. Marconi's Ice Cream, I think Milk Room will have a beer tent. So there's lots of stuff happening. The award ceremony again starts at 5:30. We would love to have you honor our beloved Ron Marsh, and then the concert starts at 6:00. Next week, we will be, as Select Board, will be holding our goals and objectives kind of meeting slash retreat. I call it a retreat, but it's here and it's not anything really fancy. But based on what comes out of that, I kind of was thinking that it would be nice to work a little bit more closely with our boards, with our Select Board-appointed boards, commissions, committees, and of course, our department heads and staff, to ensure that we're all working together towards these common goals. We certainly, as the five-member board, and Austin and Tamika cannot do it all. And I think working to have better relationships with our boards and commissions is really important because some of what comes out of that is working towards those goals. I have no desire to micromanage, I've said this before, but I think that, that we have had recent questions and frustrations brought to our attention, our office's attention, about the way some of the boards and commissions seem to be operating kind of against the will or the wishes of the Select Board. And so I would like to try and just kind of see what's going on and how we can be a more cohesive and comprehensive team, rather than a little rogue here and there. So I think with that, if anybody has any questions or comments about the goals and objectives meeting or anything.
Well said.
So that's Thursday, next Thursday, June 22nd, we'll start at 6:00 PM.
22nd next week.
I know.
And that will be here, I think cable will, will be televising it for us and everything. Moving on then, to public comment. Is there anyone here for public comments?
I'd be more than happy to open my mouth, Dick Williams over there. I'm hoping that our Highway Department is fully staffed and is going to be able to get out there and do some mowing on the side of the road. This morning, I had a near miss down in North Rutland. When they're coming down the hill, and I can't remember if I told you people before, when you see the 45 sign, to slow down on the corner before you get to River. Count how many seconds, when you see River Road, how many seconds before you get to River Road? And then think of the cars traveling 45 miles an hour. Roughly seven seconds, can you get out and around, or a trailer truck get out and around these cars coming down the hill? And that's why I mean, we need some cutback very seriously, so. Appreciate it if you, I hate to pass it on because they're booked solid as it is, but safety is very critical. Thank you.
I'd say across town, not just in that location. And I think last year, some of the branches and stuff started, the trees started overgrowing also. So I know they usually go through and brush hog a lot of it, but it's been obviously budgets and staffing, so. Thanks, Dick, for bringing that up. Anything else? Not right now?
That now.
I'm used to your list, Dick, come on.
No, not today.
I'm not sure if there's anyone on Zoom that has any. I guess not. Okay. We will move on then to the Town Administrator update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Also want to give a shout out to all the, all the graduates and Rutland residents. It's an exciting time of the year. Summer's starting, a lot of programs starting. Some things are closing out, which is, which is exciting for everyone. Want to mention to the board that Tamika and the Events Committee have submitted a grant to the Mass Cultural Council to assist with costs associated, I believe, with the summer concert series, so hoping for good news on that. Also want to flag for the board's attention, but also for the community, that a rededication ceremony of the old burial ground cemetery just, just behind us, near the library and fire station, will be on June 30th. I want to thank Eagle Scout Senator Jordan for his efforts related to the project and some other volunteers for assisting with that project as well. Town accountant has notified, has been notified by Vadar Systems that the accounting system will be essentially substantially complete and ready to go, I believe, next week, but is officially for the July 1st rollout, which is great. That'll make a lot of efficiencies on our end as well. We also received some, some good news I mentioned in my last update, related to the Wachusett Street Culvert and Road Repair Project. At that time, we thought we were on a tight deadline, and then they changed their mind, of course, because that's what the state does. And they actually will be sending the balance of the monies to cities and towns. A lot of cities and towns, I guess, made similar requests that Rutland did. You know, supply shortages, labor challenges, bidding issues. So instead of asking for reimbursement for the money and having to spend it by June 30th, we'll now just be sent the money and we don't have a tight deadline. So we'll be putting that out to bid in the next few weeks for the culvert repair and the road repair. Work started today on, on one of the existing culverts that there, that is there to, just some, some culvert work, so we'll be, we'll be bidding out the stabilization of the existing culverts that have already had some work done and then paving. That project will be bidding complete by just around August. So just actually, and we, that grant funds, those were $263,000, of which just over 100 is, 100,000 is remaining to be able, and we're confident that is enough fund, those are enough funds to be able to complete that project. Tamika and myself will be attending a kickoff call with our website vendor to get that project started. And I mentioned also in my last update, that's about a four-month project, so we'll be getting that started. Initially, we'll be, you know, kind of choosing the overall design and then compiling our project team. Tamika will be leading that effort from our office, which is exciting. Related to the website project, I want to announce that we have secured an official.gov domain from the federal government. RutlandMA.gov will be the new town website, and eventually we'll also make our, our town emails. So this is actually a free domain that's provided by the federal government for all public entities. So also kind of legitimizes our operation a little bit, and we'll also still maintain the .org domain name, just to make sure that if you send an email to, to .org or .gov, we'll still get it. So that's exciting as well. And I just want to note that town offices will be closed next Monday for the state holiday, Juneteenth. That's it, any questions?
I have one question, for the RutlandMA.gov website. Going forward, should all of our kind of communications that have our website listed on it, list that website now? Or is it?
Yeah, not yet, I think, so my intent with, with getting started early on getting this domain is to roll it out when we have the website officially rolled out, so. And certainly, there's some work that we have to do on the backend to make sure that all the emails and everything kind of links. But that's kind of the goal, is ideally in four months when the website's done, we can announce a new website and a new link to the website as well. But you'll still be able to go to Town of Rutland or email TownofRutland.org and you'll get to the official.gov domain.
Awesome, thank you. Anybody else? Thanks, Austin, and thanks Tamika for both of you for the grants and everything that you guys are working on. It's a huge help, so I appreciate it. Thank you. Moving on to old business. We have a one-day liquor license for Milk Room Brewing Company for the July 3rd as part of the 4th of July event. Tamika, everything, I think this just came in. I know, this one's been in, sorry.
Yep, that one's been in. It was approved interdepartmentally, the fee's been paid, and we have the certificate of insurance.
Anyone else have? Make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for Milk Room Brewing Company, July 3rd, which is as a part, as a part of the July 4th events.
Okay. Questions, comments, concerns? Alright, we'll call Harry.
Yay.
Matt Sinjas.
Ledger, I.
Galvin, I.
White Men, I.
Thank you. Moving on to new business. We have a proposed bench on the Town Common in honor of Ron Marsh on behalf of Boy Scouts Group 141. Austin or Tamika, do you have info on?
I had anticipated Randy was going to go here to speak on it, but from the conversation that he and I had, basically, they have two possible locations that they're looking at, and they wanted to seek the board's feedback on that. It will be fully paid for by donations received by the Boy Scouts. One of the locations that they're looking at is on the Town Common, where an Eagle Scout had redone the Veterans Memorial. There's currently two benches on either side, and then there's one more spot where a third bench would look appropriate. So I found his contact information, and Randy was going to be reaching out to him to see if he would be amenable, given that that was his project originally. And then there's another spot on the right-hand side of the Common close to Palmagussit Road. There's two large trees, and they were thinking of putting it possibly in between the two large trees. So depending on where they put it would kind of determine the design, because if they put it by the memorial, they would get the same exact kind that they have there. If they put it in between the trees, they would have it to look like the black ones that are there now for the Allen Ove family. So essentially, that, that was the gist of what Randy shared with me.
Does the board have any kind of questions, comments, concerns, feedback?
The only kind of question I have is, I'm not that familiar with Ron Marsh. Was he a veteran?
He was, and I don't want to speak to him because I feel like I don't know him very well, but I, oh, is somebody?
No, I didn't know if Dick knew if he was a veteran.
I don't know if he was a veteran.
To be honest with you, I could not say, I knew him younger. Yeah, it would just be kind of unusual to have Ron Marsh there in front of the veterans cemetery if he wasn't a veteran.
Right, I agree.
I would agree. And I was, yeah, I was thinking similar also, just in the sense of if it's on behalf of a prominent family member, match the, the other bench that is on a prominent, to honor a prominent family member, that it's similar to that. I don't know off the top of my head where exactly, I can't visualize, I can visualize in front of the, the War Memorial where it would go, but I can't between those trees. But I don't think it would break up the Common in any unnecessary fashion.
If it was between the trees.
Correct. I don't think so.
Yeah.
You think it would break up the Common?
I think it would, because when you walk down to, you should be crossing at the crosswalk at Palmagussit if you're going over toward the church's parking lots, and you would have to walk around it. And I just, I, my concern is, the town is growing, more and more people are showing up at the events, and you're running out of space as it is. It was packed last summer at the concerts. And so how many, and, and it's nothing against the Boy Scouts, our kids were in Path 141, and we were leaders in it, but it's just, I, I just get concerned how many, how much more stuff we can put in there and still have it be safe. The kids love to run around, the little kids run around, and, and it just kind of puts up more and more obstacles where they can potentially get hurt. And I'm not trying to be negative about it, but I'm just pointing out at some point, where do we stop?
Dick, you have one.
I hate to keep throwing this in, but I hope all you remember this. You know, part of that Common is not owned by the Town of Rutland, it's owned by Mass Dot. So be careful where you go, with something like that.
Which part, do we know which part?
It goes back pretty far.
Yeah. Yeah, it does.
Originally, it was 165 foot, but Joe Buckley said they narrowed it down going through this part of town, but it's still a good chunk of the, you know, part of the Common. So we'll just leave it there, and maybe sometime in the future, we can try to get Mass Dot. If I get down there, I am going to beg him to come out and put some sticks in and show us where he is, because it's been too many years we've been guessing.
To the Chair.
Yeah.
Are you talking about the Palmagussit side?
I'm talking, yes, it's the Palmagussit side.
From that side into the Common?
From Main Street into the Common.
Yeah, okay.
Is that where they've got the stakes driven in now?
Pardon?
Is that, is that where they've got the stakes driven in now on the corners?
I think that's for the sidewalks.
I understand that, but you know.
Now, as far as I know, that, you know, Joe never called me to tell me that it were, you know, they were put in, but.
So we can look into it for sure. I'll try to stop up and see, maybe tomorrow or this week, if we can get an idea as to where that other potential, not, not near the War Memorial, because I think the kind of, it sounds like the consensus of the board is maybe not there. And if it makes sense to do it in the other place, in the other location, without it impeding kind of the flow of everything. Okay with the board? If we can get a sense of where it goes, and if anybody wants to stop up and see it, at least have an idea then, sure.
If I, if I ask you, we have two pieces of land I call the Common. One is in front of the church.
Correct.
And one is in front of the town hall. Is there any reason why they hadn't looked at the one in front of the church, that piece there? I don't know what the thinking is, I'm just asking.
Yeah, he didn't mention anything about the other one, whether they were, you know, opposed to that. Those just happen to be the two locations he proposed in our discussion.
I think, and I don't want to speak for them, I think, my sense would be the church Commons don't have very much shade or anything, and the, the Town Hall Common has a lot more shade, so people that are walking and want to sit are sitting in the shade, and it's a little bit more central than down here where it's more open and people are less likely to kind of hang out. But this is also where the food trucks tend to set up on.
I'm just thinking that, yeah, the food trucks set up down there.
You know, so it might be nice to have.
Some additional seating?
Yeah.
There is a bench down in front of the library.
Yeah, under the tree, right?
Right, yeah.
So we can definitely, I mean, I think we're appreciative of it and definitely open to it. I know that they want to do it sooner rather than later, for sure. So maybe we can even add it as a quick agenda item on our boards and, uh, goals and agenda, goals and objectives meeting, if we can work out a little bit more.
Yeah, yep, I will reach out and try to connect with Randy.
Oh, I can do it, thank you. So is that, everybody comfortable with that?
Yep.
Moving on to our Public Works Agenda portion, is the fiscal rate 20, fiscal year 24 water and sewer rates discussion, and we will need to schedule a public hearing. Based on posting guidelines, it will most likely be for July 10th. Austin, I think you probably have the most, Austin or Tamika, the most relevant info from Joe and Becky.
Yeah, sure, so included in your packet is a memo from former Director Buckley, with his recommendation for FY24 water and sewer enterprise rates. You'll notice, respectively, a 9% increase recommendation for water, and a 1% increase in wastewater collection charges. The process typically for this on an annual basis is, after the budgets are approved at annual town meeting, then the Board of Public Works then adjusts the rates. So typically, they're, they go with the budget. So the budget is increasing slightly this year, as, as, as mentioned in Director Buckley's memo. If you have a question about how does this relate to the rate study that was conducted several years ago by the Abrams Group, these rate recommendations are slightly lower than the projection for FY24. I believe the projection for the water rates was 10%, and the projection for the wastewater rates was, I believe, almost 5%. So slightly lower for a variety of reasons, but that's the recommendation for these proposed rates for the board to consider. We're comfortable that these rates will support. The enterprise fund allows to get some work done, also supports from a staffing perspective, make sure we have the available resources in that utility to, to get the work done.
And in our letter, it says that collectively, the 9% on the water side and the 1% on the wastewater slash sewer side works out to an average of a $50 increase in the combined bills per year. So $50 annually, not, so, just for anybody that's listening that's kind of interested how that might impact them. I think when we had the Abrams Group in a few years ago and they did the rate analysis, it was really eye-opening that we really need to, to be committed to, to funding our utilities, and we hadn't always been. And so in order to not just kind of maintain status quo, but also provide the infrastructure and everything, so. Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns?
I do have a question about Joe's item in here, about the emergency reserve that was not included. Is that, so that's what he's saying we'll need to do for a fall town meeting?
Correct, yes, but I think when the, the warrant was put together for annual town meeting, there was language omitted that is typically included every year for a, it's 30,000, typically for each budget, 30,000 in reserve, for exactly, for those kind, for that kind of purpose, emergency, pipe repairs, things like that. So that's already on our kind of radar to make sure that that, that language is included in the warrant for the special town meeting likely in the fall.
Okay, so that would be 30,000 for each, that's the 60 total?
Correct.
And is that, and supposed to be an annual contribution? Or just a one-time?
Annual, yep.
So I, I think, I'm not 100% sure, Austin, I think generally there's at least 60,000 kind of put aside for every year, but it's not 60,000 that's built every year. It's kind of set aside 60,000 per year for.
So bring it back up too, if we need to?
Yeah.
Okay, I see.
And it comes out of the retained earnings and everything. I know a few years ago, we did use a significant portion of it when there was failure at the water treatment plant. And given the age of all of our infrastructure, I think it's a concern for sure that, that we have that money to set aside.
And we use it. I already know right now that they're, they're looking for July 1st already because there's some, there's some leaks in the system that, that right now in FY23, we don't have the funds for. So we'll be using it, you know, we'll be spending money very early in, in July to make sure we get some infrastructure work done, so.
So for tonight, we just kind of wanted to bring this to everybody's attention, get it on everybody's radar, and let the public know that it's coming and that we will be having a public hearing on it officially on, at our July 10th meeting. And then at that meeting is when we would officially vote on, on the recommended rates and everything else, so I have to public comment.
Yeah, if I may, I included this information in the Publix packet on the website, if you're interested, but I'll also be posting it on the Select Board page under News and Announcements, so it's easily accessible, especially once that public hearing notice is published.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it. If there's no additional comments or anything on that, we can move into our FY24 Boards, Commissions, Committees, and Departments reappointments. Tamika, you have the list.
Yes, so everybody has the, should have this list, FY24 appointments. The names that are highlighted are folks that I did not get a letter of interest from, so we would not be reappointing them at this time, but my hope is by the June 26th meeting, I'll have something. And then I also just, also highlighted the positions that were vacant, that we were unable to find somebody for. And I also just wanted to note, Austin had made a recommendation a couple of months ago with the, under the section Liaisons, Representatives, Coordinators, and Professionals, to appoint the position rather than the individual. So you'll notice that the position is listed, and then in this case, I just put who the individual happens to be right now. So if the board is comfortable with that, we can start that process forward. And then that way, it, so in other words, Harry, if, like, for example, when Candace left as the Assistant Town Clerk, she's a records access officer. So the board was then left to reappoint somebody specific for that position. Whereas if it's just the position, whomever takes that, that role automatically becomes that, and it doesn't have to come back to the board till the following fiscal year. Does that make sense?
Efficient?
Yes, that's the goal.
And it ensures that the, that they're receiving adequate training when they come in, especially for like the public, the records access officers and everything, that that's part of the training on the onboarding process, rather than waiting to make sure that they're appointed to that position and everything. It kind of goes in the job description, then I would assume.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
So we can.
I, I do have a question on this. Does being a paid employee of the town, quote, paid employee of the town, restrict somebody from serving on a commission? from serving on a commission?
I think only in certain instances if the bylaws specifically say so, that it does, but I think generally there are maybe ethics forms that need to be formed, filled out to state the conflict of interest or just notice of of potential, so.
Okay.
Yes.
Peter Kornet's way, that that is a surprisingly complicated question, even more than I thought when you and I discussed it, Harry. So I'm going to differentiate you and Paul for a moment, because Paul is Program Director of RCTV, and that is a paid position of the town, but the Select Board made Cable Advisory Committee Special Employees, which allows us to draw salaries from the town as well. So it it's, it depends on exactly the position, exactly what the pay is. A stipend does not count as a salary, so someone serving on this board who who only receives a stipend could serve on another board without a problem, as long as you avoid conflicts. Select Board is a very special board because you are the executive of the town, and so as Leah suggested, it's probably just forms in most cases to draw, in order to serve on another committee.
Okay.
So for someone who works for DPW, there is inherently no conflict there, so long as the committee that they're on doesn't do direct business with DPW.
Okay. So would it be fair to say that then in most cases, they're a special employee?
Special employee is a designation given by the Select Board to certain committees.
Okay, so if you're, if you receive a stipend, then you're okay?
Right, it's not a salary.
Right, but if you receive a salary, then what? Is it okay to still serve on another committee, unless you're a special employee?
As long as it's an unrelated committee, yes, it's fine.
Or you recuse yourself from business that pertains to your committee that comes before, or your position that comes before.
That can be tricky, but yes, you can also recuse yourself, but if you end up doing no good to the committee by recusing yourself, then there's not a lot of value in serving.
Okay, very good, thanks, Peter.
Welcome.
So I think the best, most efficient way maybe to do it is we can look at the list and just if the group is comfortable, go through the bolded areas and make a motion to appoint those individuals, kind of lump sum per bolded area, and we can wait on the highlighted individuals to see if they're interested, and maybe, yeah, if that makes sense.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
I would, if you would, just make a little comment about the people that are new to the committees.
Yep.
Just congratulate them.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I mean, I think a lot of these are reappointments, but we definitely would welcome, thank you for bringing that up, Harry, we definitely appreciate people stepping up to fill in and and serve, and we are always welcome in looking for additional individuals. So there are a few new members or new-ish members, so we'll try to bring that up as we go as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Harry, good call.
I make a motion to approve Town Council KP Law PC as a full member, one-year term, expiring in two thousand twenty-four.
So I just wanted to comment, I know there had been some discussion with the previous Board as far as this and working with the Town Administrator's Office and everything, the amount of business that's currently before KP doesn't seem to be the most efficient or cost effective to be switching legal counsel. Austin is aware of a lot of the concerns that the previous Board had brought up with KP and feels, I think, I don't want to speak for you, Austin, but I think feel comfortable that we can have a good working relationship with them to kind of get over some of those bumps.
Okay, I wasn't on the other board, so.
I was going to say, is there anything that.
Would you speak something?
Us as a new board should be.
No, I just, it was for the public because I think it was out there in the public quite a bit, and I wanted it to just be known that that there was, you know, kind of the Town Administrator had done some stuff, and I talked with Austin and Tamika, and just the amount of work that's currently with KP, at some point, it would be very much that we would have two town councils for a lot of of things, so.
One of, if I made it through the chair, one of the complaints, for those of you that don't know, was that a lot of, some of the older members felt that they were very hard to reach, and it was really sounded, if I remember correctly, it was really just a communication thing, they they found it was very hard to communicate with them as far as returning emails, stuff like that.
I mean, as a new board, it's a one-year position, so we'll see how it goes this year.
Yeah, yep.
And if not, well, let's hope for the best.
So we have a motion and a second for that one. We have the conversation, I'll take roll call.
Harry, yay.
Mattson, yes.
Ledger, aye.
Galvin, aye.
White, man, aye.
All right, I make a motion to accept Town Accountant, is it accept the term or approve?
Approve.
I make a motion to approve Town Accountant Donna Kutcher as a full member, three-year term, expiration two thousand twenty-six.
Second. Questions, comments, concerns? I know Donna's good to go, so here and then, I will take a.
Second, aye.
Mattson, aye.
Ledger, aye.
Galvin, aye.
White, man, aye with appreciation, I know she came in kind of in the middle and has been really catching up, so I appreciate that, thank you. Moving on to Boards and Commissions.
Make a motion to approve the Agricultural Commission Member Glenn, is it Coppola? I apologize for miss.
Coppola.
Is that correct?
Coppola.
Coppola, okay, Coppola, as a full member, three-year term, expiration two thousand twenty-six, and Robert Soderberg as an alternate, alternate member, one-year term, expiration two thousand twenty-four.
No, no, I'm just.
It's my name.
No, they're very perfect, yeah.
We're doing the whole group?
I didn't know, I thought, were we just doing a slate?
Do we want to do?
Whatever's easier, whatever's easier, what do you think?
I was thinking, have some that haven't been, you know, late, or just. I know, it is.
If I could run it up, I mean, I believe if we haven't heard back, I wouldn't reappoint.
I guess it's more comfortable if we did it as a slate as presented, and then, then what are the highlighted?
Highlight, we haven't heard back, so technically they're not being reappointed, I assume, right?
Oh, okay, I see.
So as presented, it's fine?
Not being reappointed.
Correct, because we haven't either, we haven't received a letter of interest from them or a letter of support from the Board, the Chair.
Yes, the Board Chair.
So would we do the whole slate and then just name the exceptions, or how would you do that?
I personally think it was good the way that Tom did it, where it specifically said the two members we were appointing with their terms, just because there are the two members that are highlighted, but it's completely out of the discretion of.
Let's just think through the way we had done it, so that way we can.
Yep.
You know, so we have a motion and a second, Dick, we have that you don't, we don't have your letter of interest, or?
I gave it to Glenn at our meeting last, and he was supposed to turn it in.
Okay.
What's, why would?
Yeah.
Darren Ross, five roofers, five, why would someone that's serving on a committee need to express a letter of interest? We can't get people as it is.
I I hear you, it's our policy, I think it's bigger when we have a possibly contentious or sought, like, that there's more than one person interested per thing, per per opening, but Dick, we can reach out and if you're, I mean, we will do whatever other reappointments on our July twenty, or June twenty-sixth meeting, so we can follow up with Glenn and try to get that.
I'll see him on the phone.
Okay.
The only problem with, like, Dick is, he, if there's a meeting in between now and then.
He's still on, these are for July first.
Okay, through the chair.
Yeah.
As as chairman for the CIPC over all the years, for somebody serving on the Board, I never required a letter of intent, but it was the Chairman's job to submit to the Board that that individual was going to be staying on. So it really wasn't the individual who's on there, it was the Chairman's job to do that.
So we'll follow up.
Don't worry, Dick, we'll fix it.
You sure?
Of course, I'm on it.
All right.
All right, we have a motion and a second for those two, so had some conversation. Harry?
I'm all set. Second, aye.
Mattson, aye.
Ledger, aye.
Galvin, aye.
White, man, aye. Moving on to CIPC.
Yeah, I'm going to go for a couple.
All right, I'm going to take over here.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Christopher Borinson, well, I'm in, I don't think I can, I'm still the Chairman of the Committee, so I can't appoint him.
Okay.
I will make a a motion to appoint Christopher Borinson, full member to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
Second. Questions, comments, concerns?
Just a note that Christopher Borinson is new, he is new to the town, been here about six or seven years and wanted to get involved.
Awesome.
So, good person.
Welcome, thank you. Here and no other conversation, Harry.
Second, yay.
Mattson, aye.
Ledger, aye.
Galvin, aye.
White, man, aye. Moving on to Conservation Commission.
I make a motion to approve appointment of Melissa Danza as full member, three-year term, expiring in two thousand twenty-six, Leroy Skip Clark as full member, three-year term, expiring two thousand twenty-six, and Glenda Williamson as full member, three-year term, expiring two thousand twenty-six for the Conservation Commission.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? I think it's great that we have two Conservation Agents on this committee now, so that's awesome.
We've got a very strong group of folks, we're very fortunate.
All right, I will take a vote, Harry.
Second, yay.
Mattson, aye.
Ledger, aye.
Galvin, aye.
White, man, aye. It looks like for Earthworks, we have not yet received confirmation from that member.
Yes, yep, I have the Chair recommendation, but not a letter of interest.
Okay. So we'll move on to the Fourth of July.
I make a motion to approve for reappointment Barbara Campbell, full member, one-year term, expiring two thousand twenty-four, John Fitzgerald, can I read all the names since they're all the same?
Yeah, they're all one-year appointments.
All right, Barbara Campbell, John Fitzgerald, Carrie Moda, Tina Greenfield, Missy Puleafico, I apologize if I.
That was pretty good.
As full members.
There's one more, oh, sorry.
And Ben Berekian, as full members, with one-year term, expiring two thousand twenty-four for the Fourth of July Committee.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Harry.
Second, yay.
Mattson, aye.
Ledger, aye.
Galvin, aye.
White, man, aye. Moving on to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and just a note, it looks like we have a three-year term but ending in two thousand twenty-five.
I'm sorry, I should have changed that to a two-year term, that was my mistake.
Okay, so it's a two-year term, okay.
Yeah, so just to explain, there was, over the course of the year, there were some members that were alternates that were then pushed up to full members when other folks resigned, and so Anita reached out and said, it's really not great to have three members up in the same year, so when the Board met a couple of weeks ago, I asked them if one of them would be willing to serve for a two-year term, and Art was fine with that, so we're going to do two, three years, and one two-year.
Okay, thank you for that.
All right, I'll do a motion to approve the re- reappointment, or appointment, it's only new, appointment of Arthur Wells as full member for a two-year term, expiring in two thousand twenty-five for Zoning Board of Appeals, Robert Paulson and Jacob Morris as full members, serving three-year terms, expiring in two thousand twenty-six for Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? I want to express my appreciation to the Zoning Board, to the Zoning Board of Appeals in general, because they've taken a lot of heat over the past few years especially, and they continue to step up and serve, so I appreciate what what they do, so, thank you. Harry, go ahead.
Second, yay.
Mattson, aye.
Ledger, aye.
Galvin, aye.
White, man, aye. Moving on to Council on Aging, it looks like we have one new member who we have not yet, I think she was just appointed mid-year or so, is that?
Yeah, so I guess she's been participating with the Council on Aging, but not as a formal member.
Okay.
Because I did speak to Nancy about that.
Okay, and is that missing a letter of interest?
Karen and I have it for Peg Sullivan, I do not have her letter of interest.
So just the two?
Yep.
All right, I'm motion to approve the appointment of June, is it Willie or Wiley?
Willie.
Willie, June Willie, and Karen Giuliano as full members with three-year terms, expiring two thousand twenty-six for the Council on Aging.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? I love seeing the new, the new interest in that, in that group, so thank you. Harry, go ahead.
Second, yay.
Mattson, aye.
Ledger, aye.
Galvin, aye.
White, man, aye. For anyone listening, it looks like we have a vacant slot on the Historical Commission for a full member, three-year term, so that will be coming.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
I know there's going to be probably some more discussion, but we actually have three vacant seats.
Okay.
We'll have three as of July first.
Okay.
For the historical, Mark Frito is not.
Yeah, that's, that's his seat, this was expired.
To others that were not filled, so there's actually, it's a seven member.
Oh, but those were like already vacant, so it's not like current members that are going to resign early type thing, okay, okay, gotcha. Which it is listed that way on the website, I only had it this way because this was the particular seat that was up this year, whereas the other seats are up, if that makes sense?
Yep, yep. Sorry. Okay, Tamika, maybe as we go through all of this, we can get a list of all the vacancies, not just the, for this year, but in total, and get that out as a blast, especially if we're trying to recruit people.
I actually did already, I, it's it's on the website and it's on the electronic sign, I have a whole list for each boarding commission, and whether it's a full member or an alternate member, if they're being sought.
Thank you, I appreciate it. All right, Insurance Advisory Committee.
All right, I make a motion to appoint Rebecca Tuttle, these all have different, do I need to go through each individual because of the?
I would say just that they're all full member and they're all one-year appointments, but what the position is, because they all refer to a different kind of structure.
Okay, so motion to approve Rebecca as full members for one-year term, expiring two thousand twenty-four, Rebecca Tuttle as Chair, Donald.
Hapakowski.
Hapakowski, thank you, retiree, John Brown, DPW rep, Kerry Remington, unrepresented, Diane Herzig, Sergeant's rep, Rachel Crompton, Dispatch rep, Mark Cove, Fire EMT rep for Insurance Advisory Committee.
Second.
And just a comment that the Patrolman's rep is vacant, so any of the patrolmen that are listening, they need you. All right.
Through the chair for a second, who was that before, was it Fanuccio?
Uh, no, it was Citronella. Citronella, Cit for now, sorry. By the handle. Jason Citronella, sorry.
All right, Harry.
Second, yay.
Mattson, aye.
Ledger, aye.
Galvin, aye.
White, man, aye. Moving on to the RDIC Rutland Development and Industrial Commission.
I make a motion to approve for appointment Michelle Van Reed and James Soucy as full members with five-year terms, expiring in two thousand twenty-eight for Rutland Development and Industrial Commission.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Here and none, Harry?
Second, yay.
Mattson, aye.
Ledger, aye.
Galvin, aye.
White, man, aye. Thanks, Michelle, for coming out, too.
Yeah, thanks for serving on that board.
Moving into Liaisons, Representatives, Coordinators, and Professionals, we have, this is what Tamika and Austin were referring to as appointing the position rather than the individual, so we have the Ethics Commission Liaison.
I make a motion to appoint the Town Clerk for a one-year term, expiring in two thousand twenty-four for the Ethics Commission Liaison.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Here and none, Harry?
Second, yay.
Mattson, aye.
Ledger, aye.
Galvin, aye.
White, man, aye. Municipal Hearing Officer.
I make a motion to approve the Town Clerk for a one-year term, expiring in two thousand twenty-four for Municipal Hearing Officer.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns?
Question.
Yeah.
What is a municipal hearing officer?
That's a great question. Austin.
I'm in. I'm appointing. I'm in. I'm appointing somebody else.
Sounds like I do a lot of, I don't know actually what it is either.
Challenger a ticket, like a parking ticket maybe?
I don't know.
He don't know.
There are a variety of municipal hearings that can take place that generally don't happen in this town, and when you, and, and the municipal hearing officer is sort of the fallback for a number of public hearings. Uh, someone doesn't like the fee that they got from the dog license, someone doesn't like something that, so they want to appeal something. When it's appealable to the town, the municipal hearing officer is the backstop against all the other departments, if it's not specified by statute.
Would that change if we go to a charter, or no?
It can if we were to create a new posi, if, if the charter specifies a new position, absolutely.
Oh, no, no, I mean, it, it's so, it, when it's a municipal hearing officer, it doesn't matter what size the town is, it's a municipal hearing officer.
That's correct, okay.
Good question. Thank you. All right, I'll take a little one.
Second, yay?
Matt's in, yay.
Ledger, I.
Yeah, when I.
Wait, my eye. Chief Procurement Officer, um, currently, I think we only have one, I think my hope is that we have more than one, um, person that can do CPO, is that your, generally Town Administrator, it kind of still trickles down through, up through Town Administrator, but that we would have multiple individuals ideally. All right, um, so, uh, Chief Procurement Officer.
Question. Is that, when you say procurement, that has to do with contracts and stuff like that, that you're dealing with?
Any sort of purchasing that the town does, yeah.
Okay, I mean, you leave it up to the departments what they can buy and stuff, but you're responsible for letting them know what it is they can buy.
Yeah, and assisting them with their, you know, there's obviously certain thresholds, if you're purchasing, um, goods and services or any sort of construction, so, um, the Chief Procurement Officer generally is the, uh, responsible party for purchasing, especially if there's questions about purchasing. Um, or if there's any sort of bid protests or appeals, the Chief Procurement Officer often is the point of contact for that.
Okay, we got that covered in the town then.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, thank you, Austin.
I'll take a motion.
I make a motion to appoint the Town Administrator for a one-year term expiring in 2024 for Chief Procurement Officer.
Second.
We'll call.
Second, yay?
Matt's in, I.
Ledger, I.
Yeah, when I.
Wait, my eye. Constables.
All right, these are individuals.
Yes, uh, yes, these are individuals.
And they both did express interest in continuing to serve.
Okay. I make a motion to appoint Mark Mosio.
Very good.
Mosio, and Richard Salz, uh, full member, one-year terms expiring 2024 for Constable.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, Harry.
Second, yay?
Matt's in, I.
All right, Ledger, I.
Yeah, when I.
Wait, my eye. Um, Sealer of Weights and Measures.
Motion to appoint the State of Massachusetts, one-year term expiring 2024 for Sealer of Weights and Measures.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, Harry.
Second, yay?
Matt's in, I.
Ledger, I.
Yeah, when I.
Wait, my eye. Uh, Veterans Graves Officer.
Make a motion to approve Philip Canal, Cannell, uh, for one-year term expiring 2024 for Veterans Graves Officer.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? We'll call Harry.
Second, yay?
Matt's in, I.
Ledger, I.
Yeah, when I.
Wait, my eye. Uh, this is a big one, we have the ADA Coordinator position vacant, um, it's been vacant for a while, and I think that's a really important, uh, role in town, so anyone that has interest, um, and or background for that, we would really appreciate, um, that, that helps.
Good, yeah, didn't Lyndon have something to do with that for a while? Isn't that what he does?
No, he never did it, it was previously, um, Cindy Purcell, and last year when we did FY23 reappointments, um, it was, it was vacant beginning then, um, so he may have talked about it, but there's no one that's actually been appointed to that position.
And no one that has expressed interest in.
Yeah.
Through the chair. Is that a very complicated position? Are you dealing with the state, I, I, I mean, I don't think the townspeople really understand what that position is.
I think previously, um, the position was basically working with the town when they were making improvements to buildings, um, to advise on, you know, what would help it, or what would make it ADA compliant, what would we need from that perspective? Um, but I don't think that they were ever tasked with doing the actual communication with the state on behalf of the town, it was more guidance for the departments.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I know most communities are very similar to, you just lump everything onto your Town Administrator, Town Manager. A lot of communities do end up designating their Town Administrator, Town Manager as the ADA Coordinator, and a lot of everything that Tamika just mentioned, but also, um, if there is ever a, um, complaint with respect to ADA, the ADA Coordinator would often also be that point of contact as well, or, um. It's able to kind of work with the parties to, um, make sure the ADA needs are addressed, um, so just something to consider.
So I think we can leave it vacant for right now, but maybe consider at even our next meeting, we can consider having the conversation as to whether it makes sense to appoint the Town Administrator, at least for a one-year term, if we don't have any interest by then, because I think it doesn't do the town any service to not have someone, um, specified there.
Yeah, it does sound a little technical for the average person on the street who would like to apply for it.
Yeah, I think it definitely.
Yeah.
It's a little bit more than usual.
Okay.
You do have a Town Administrator who took the ADA training when he was in a previous experience, I don't know why.
Who has a whole lot of things on the plate right now, too.
Well, through the chair, wouldn't that be something that leans more towards the, uh, Council on Aging or something like that, I mean, are they involved with, with that ADA, no?
No, I mean, Tom, this is especially with, you think about, um, you know, the, the wood studio. The ramp, you know, that's, that's an ADA sort of, so it's, you know, there's, um, you have to make sure that there's particular, um, you know, even signage has to be ADA. So there's a lot of things about, um, especially from accessibility standpoint in public buildings that.
Yeah.
There's that ADA expertise, um, you know, uh, oftentimes it ends up working with the Building Commissioner, Building Inspector, to make sure that, um, you know, when you're doing a municipal project, um, it's actually in, you know, state building code as well, to be able to be ADA compliant, so. It's more, as, as Harry mentioned, it's, it's definitely more technical than.
Oh, there's a lot to it, I know there's been people calling recreation saying they'll donate mulch for the playground, and I didn't realize you need special mulch.
Yes.
It's gotta be mulch that a wheelchair can roll on, I, the average person would not, I didn't know that, to me mulch is mulch, but it's gotta be special mulch, so, yeah, there's a lot to it. Okay, thank you, just curious.
Um, the Central Mass Regional Planning Committee, CMRPC.
All right, I make a motion to approve, um, Dick Williams.
Jen, I apologize, I, I, this is probably confusing on my part, um, Dick is actually appointed by the Planning Board.
Okay.
I just put that as a note on there, so really, the Select Board is appointing Tim as the.
Okay, okay, as the alternate, okay.
Sorry.
Uh, all right, then I make a motion to approve Tim Narwald, uh, as alternate member, uh, on a one-year term expiring in 2024 to the Central Mass Regional Planning Committee.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Harry.
Second, yay?
Matt's in, I.
Ledger, I.
Yeah, when I.
Wait, my eye, and thank you guys, I know it's a lot of meetings and it's a lot of important stuff, so thank you for that. Um, Stormwater Advisory Committee, um, we can make a motion to appoint the position, um, although it's currently vacant, and then when that person, um, when that position is filled, then that's part of their onboarding.
I make a motion to appoint the DPW Director to a one-year term expiring in 2024 to the Stormwater Advisory Committee.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Harry.
Second, yay?
Matt's in, I.
Ledger, I.
Yeah, when I.
Wait, my eye. Um, the WCRTA, the Worcester County Regional Transit Authority Representative is vacant, I think this position has been vacant since I've been on the board for five years, um, and we currently, I don't think, have, um, any WCRTA access out here, there's one bus that does a little bit for the seniors, but other than that, there's nothing, so, um, again, that's, I think historically, it had been either a Town Administrator or a Select Board Member that had sat on that, um, but since I've been on the board, it's been vacant, I don't know if there's value to.
Yeah, they seem to think that the Town Administrator, so I, uh, took all my training, I'm, I was getting ready to attend the next meeting, so if the board is considering otherwise, please let me know, because I received a congratulations, welcome to the board email, I think their meeting is next week, so, um.
I just told you.
Uh, yeah.
So I wonder if for a few of these, like for the ADA Coordinator and WCRTA, um, and maybe even the Earth Day, if they can be kind of Town Administrator and then the, that can fall under or designated.
Yeah, like what you did with the upper box, Tom.
Yes. Is, so maybe we can consider that for our next meeting, is that, is that okay, but you can just continue on as you are working on, is that okay with the board?
Yeah, sounds great.
Yep, okay. Um, so if you can just make a note, Tamika, at least for these.
Absolutely.
That's probably a consideration direction we'll go.
Sure.
Um, for our Healthcare Benefits Consultant, uh, make a motion to appoint the Boyle Group for a one-year term expiring 2024 for Healthcare Benefits Consultant.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns?
Uh, question, have they been with us for quite a long time?
I think so, yeah.
Yes, they have been, and I did confer with Becky to ensure that she wanted to continue working with them, and she did.
That's what I was gonna ask you next.
Yes, yeah, she did.
Okay.
We'll call, Harry.
Second, yay?
Matt's in, I.
Ledger, I.
Yeah, when I.
Wait, my eye. Um, similar to what we just talked about, the Representative to Washington Earth Day has been, is vacant, I think it's been vacant for, uh, at least a few years now, um, and so maybe we can also lump that in with the Town Administrator or Designee appointment. Um, I think that that's valuable because we do pay a fee to that, and so that not having represented, representation there does us a little bit of.
Austin's already on it. We already met with Norma today, so we might as well point him on there.
Um, and then Records Access Officers.
All right, I make a motion to appoint the Town Clerk, Assistant Town Clerk, Fire Chief, RRECC Director, Chief of Police, and Police Admin Assistant to one-year terms expiring 2024 for Records Access Officers.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Harry, we'll call.
Second, yay?
Matt's in, I.
Ledger, I.
Yeah, when I.
Wait, my eye. Thank you, thank you for everyone that has expressed interest and has been reappointed, those who have expressed interest but not yet been reappointed, um, and those who are going to be reappointed, whether they show interest or not, no, I'm kidding. But seriously, we're always looking for people and fresh voices, um, new perspectives are definitely welcome, so please, please. Um, next up, we have a, a request for a letter of support from the Cable Advisory Committee, um, to, on bills, uh, House 74 and Senate 34, to modernize funding for community media programming. I think we have the letter here, um, it's Paul, Peter, and Austin, do you have any?
Um, briefly, as I've pointed out several times in the past, court cutting is taking its toll on the amount of money we collect each year from, from license fee from charter, uh, that's a statewide problem, and, and for the past several sessions, there's been a bill, uh, before the legislature to revamp the way that, uh, uh, local television stations get funded through the licensing fees. I don't, I'm not familiar with all the details, but what I'm hearing is that this session of the legislature is looking like it's going, more likely to pass it than previous sessions has, so this will have a significant impact on how the license fees work, that we, that the town gets paid in order to allow charter to do business, it will specifically allow the collection of, of, the town to collect some proportion of money for those who only get internet service. Who today pay charter, oh, the money they pay to Spectrum does not come to us at all, um, this is actually happening also at a very good time, because this next year, we're looking at the, at the, um, at, at, at the license agreement, it's time they're up, or they will be, and so this is a perfect time to have all the financials work out if it goes that way, so. Our hope is that you will support, as the Cable Committee does, uh, writing this letter off to the, to the subcommittee that's currently processing it.
Thank you. I don't have to say anything.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
So the only thing we collect fees on is TV?
Yes.
Yep.
Because that's all we're allowed to by law.
Okay.
That's it.
All right.
Yeah, yeah, and, and that's specific to cable, not any, like, other subscriptions like Netflix or anything like those.
Correct.
Okay.
That's right, yep.
And this would, so is that part of this new law, those subscription services, or is it specific?
That gets really fuzzy because. There are different funding mod, there are different models for how people pay for television, and so, for example, we will never, ever be able to collect money from someone who receives it over the air. There are, when. When the service is ostensibly free but paid for by ads, we will never be able to get money for that, so that's a Netflix, that is, um, Amazon but not Freevee.
It has all your ads on.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Um, when someone pays a subscription fee, like to Disney Plus or HBO Max, I don't know how that's going to work out, because the funding models are very, are esoteric at best. So I don't know exactly who the money would come from, from, for each of the subscription models, but we at least have a mechanism to receive some amount, and certainly for, for Spectrum to provide the internet services to everyone who uses those services.
So that's the primary, so that people like myself that only pay for internet, there would still be.
Right.
Okay.
Just to add something is that each year, for the past three years, our, our annual stipend has decreased because the number of people who don't go with charter anymore, they go with Netflix or one of the other services, okay? So in other words, you know, okay, so we're kind of holding on to the whole thing through this law.
And it's not just that, you can get a Spectrum deal that is internet service streaming only, there's no cable, you get, you don't get the local channels.
That is true, that is true.
But you get TV without paying.
Without paying, I see, yeah.
Yeah. Also, just to put a little more, I don't remember giving this number before, um, this year's operating budget is $40,000 more than we got from Spectrum this year, and that doesn't count any of our other project, capital projects that we're working on.
Thank you.
Leah?
Yeah. And I'm not sure if this is right for him, but is there any, is the Cable Committee looking at maybe a different service provider, because I think we're losing a lot of customers in town because the service is so spotty.
The last time that we, which is nearly 10 years ago now, that we put out a request looking for companies to do business, exactly one responded. Wait, we, we put out for three, but.
Three, three different requests sent out to different companies, okay, did not receive one spot, one, uh, response.
Yeah, but that was 10 years ago.
No, no, I know, and, and we will do that again naturally as part of, that's part of the licensing process, is putting out the RFQ and, or RFP.
Part of it is that their service to our town is not very good, like, you, if you've watched any of the hockey games and it goes in and out constantly, it's driving us crazy.
Especially in the last 48 hours.
Yes.
It's been very bad.
Yes, and, and so that's why people end up going to different services, and that's why I put $40,000 short, I think. All right, sorry.
So, we have a, um, letter drafted, um, in support, so I would be looking for a motion to authorize the signature of, or that we would send the letter.
Uh, I make a motion to authorize the letter sent by the, right here, just, and also, sent by the Joint Committee on Advanced.
To the Joint Committee.
Oh, excuse me.
Yes.
To the Joint Committee on Advanced Information Technology, um, from the Rutland Community Television.
And Select Board.
And Select Board.
Do a second? I'll second. Questions, comments, concerns? Harry.
Second, yay?
Matt's in, I.
Ledger, I.
Yeah, when I.
Wait, my eye.
Thank you all very much.
Um, next up, we have Long-Term Financial Planning Committee. Um, next up, we have long-term financial planning committee. Um, this is something I've kind of been pushing. It was on our goals and objectives from last board, um, as well as talking with Austin and everything, um, with, especially with the override, um, passing, uh, that we put some real true weight behind our long-term financial planning. And, um, Austin might have some insight.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a great idea. It's something that I think internally, I'm, uh, with my finance team to develop already a, a long-term model, um, to spell out both our revenue and our expenditure picture. Um, but certainly I think if there's a, a committee with representation from, especially all the, all the boards that like to talk about or spend money, um, I think it'd be helpful to, to get together periodically to talk about the state of the finances, but also to kind of see where we are in terms of, uh, the override picture and, and presenting some sort of report to the community, um, for the state of the finances as well.
So this is, sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just, this is a little bit different. It's a long-term. So FinCom kind of looks at the, the current year and everything, where this is looking, current year, but also looking out and projections and everything. So if or when, um, there's conversations about additional, uh, an override down the road or something, there's benchmarks that this is what we did, these are the benchmarks that we've shown that we've spent this money, or we didn't, this is what the value was to it, um, and everything. And we can kind of plan a little bit more, um, long-term because I think the town has not historically done a great job actively planning for long-term expenses.
What's your definition of long-term? How many years?
I would think at least five years.
I'd make a recommendation for ten.
Yeah.
At least ten to twenty. Twenty maybe, but we know pretty much what our normal projection base is gonna be. Highs and lows. You go back twenty years, we kind of know, so, but at least ten years. That's what the C I P C tries to do when we look at our capital expenditures, so that's why I brought it in ten.
Yep.
Least.
Uh, you know, I, but I think in terms of, um, where this committee, I think, could have a little bit more involvement. Sixty, almost seventy percent of our expenses go down the road.
Yeah.
Involvement from that entity. Um, I think would be helpful for a long-term planning committee, uh, for finances. Uh, but also, again, you mentioned, you mentioned capital, you mentioned finance, um, some of the other caught, big cost drivers like our health insurance. So it'd be helpful to have some involvement, I think, from, from the committee that you just reappointed as well. So, um, getting a, a larger picture of our finances and then how can we spell that out? And obviously that, that committee ends up working with capital, that committee ends up working with finance. And then I think also there's a, a lot of work on the staff side that I think would be done on that committee as well.
And I would like to see some involvement from the school, probably administration side. Um, but when the school ta- school in general, both Wachusett and Bay Path together, take about between fifty-five and sixty percent of our budget, that's not uncommon. Um, but when that's how much of the budget goes to our education system, I think we do ourselves a disservice by not including them in these conversations because we as a plant, as a town, can have all this planned, um, and then something happens on the school side and that, without any communication, so.
Through the chair?
Yep.
I've always assumed that the Wachusett input came through the school committee we have here in Rutland. So although it's nice and the superintendent says this and somebody says that, we have a school committee that represents us, so that should be the front of where we look to get advice and help from, is the school committee. Now, maybe I'm looking at it wrong, I don't know, but.
The way the school committee is designed is such that they can't, the members, individual members can't speak on behalf of the entire committee or for the entire committee. So, um, they could attend our meetings and listen, but they can't really have that dialogue, engage in that dialogue or anything. The budget comes through the, um, generally through the administration and then goes into over some level of oversight through the, the subcommittee, and then the full committee approves or doesn't approve. Um, so, uh, oh, I think that they're a little bit more even hands-off than, than we are here in town with the town administrators. So the, the makeup and the, kind of the rules of the school committee are a little bit different than the rules of our, our town government.
So this would be something we'd be looking at, at our goals and planning session.
Would it be something that if they came in and gave us a report, they would, that would be considered a dialogue?
Um, I mean, I personally would hope that it's more than just a report. I would hope that there's conversation, um, and that this is an ongoing and not just a one, one meeting going into the budget. Because I think that we do that every year with our FinCom, who is helping set, set, set the budget. But this is really the ongoing conversations as to how can we stay on a, a sustainable path forward? And not just what happened this year, what do we need to do next year? Um, it's a little bit more of a macro level.
I do agree that I, I agree with you that I think the system needs to be brought in. However, if you look at the increases from the system based on what the town's needs are, it has never been in favor of the town's needs that I can remember. So I don't know what good it would do bringing them in. I'm, I'm up for it. I just don't see the positive of adding them to the long-term financial planning committee process. That's what I'm saying.
I think the positive is we know about it before February.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ideally, we have a conversation, just when we're starting the budget process in a couple of months, uh, we have a conversation whether it's with the political, um, members of the Wachusett School District or from a staff standpoint, the administration and the finance team to say, we're projecting X for our town departments, what are you projecting to put us in the initial numbers? And we have those conversations, so we're not, the budget process doesn't go stale and then all of a sudden we get an assessment in February. And then we have, I'm sure what's been happening over the past several years in terms of education, so. Ideally, I mean, I view this as, and I'm coming from a community where quite literally it was housed in their charter. This is a long-term financial planning, uh, but also just general time-wide strategy, um, where they're talking about everything. And they're having a monthly meeting, even in July, when the budget's done and there's really not much to talk about, they're still talking. And having a, uh, they're charting, of course, moving forward for the budget, but also everything else.
I, I agree that I think long-term financial plan for this town is so important. So I'd be interested in hearing about how we put this thing together.
Yeah, through the, sorry, Gary, I apologize.
No, no, because something like this, I mean, you're looking at, I won't call them top professionals, but you're looking at top people who have an idea, who've worked in the system, who've been there over the years to say, here's really how we need to look at this. So we could, we could really form one solid committee there.
But through the chair, so you're basically saying department heads, right? Would be a member of this committee, or is it just who assigns the committee, who picks the committee? Who would do that?
So that's, I think, where the, the board would come into play in terms of how you would like to determine the makeup and who.
Well, that's the thing. The reason I ask is if there's one thing Rutland's good at, is forming committees. And then nothing gets accomplished. It's just a gaggle of people in a room.
Yep.
That argue and nothing gets done. And I think these committees, in a lot of ways, are kind of a cop-out, you know? It, it's, it's a way for people in charge to go, whoa, we formed a committee, I don't know what to tell you. Whereas I'd rather see the professionals in town. The police chief knows what he needs. Fire chief knows what he needs. D P W knows what he needs. And then you're the boss. Put it all together and, and then bring it to us or bring it to, you know, whoever, you know?
That's certainly a, a model that I think some communities have done. I, before this conversation with Leah, um, I was planning on having a more of a working group model to be able to do exactly what the intent, I think, of this committee is. Uh, even for my own, um, preparation for the budget season. Uh, you know, that was sort of my goal, was to make those relationships with town staff and also, you know, the schools to make sure that we have.
Yeah, just if you get too many people involved in these, even though you mean well, you, it just doesn't. I've, I've been on them. A lot of, everyone in the room has been on these things and it just doesn't ever set, it doesn't accomplish anything. Not in Rutland anyways. Maybe it does in other communities. That's just my feeling. I, I just.
So I, 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 through the chair?
Yeah.
I, I think you're right, and I think if we draft this thing carefully and pick the right people, it could be astounding in terms of long-term planning.
Yeah, and, and that's what we all want, right? I just, I think we need to lean a bit, rely a little bit more on our department heads. They're the experts in their field. You know, I don't know anything about D P W. I, I, who the hell am I to sit on a committee and say that D P W needs this twenty years from now? I think we, if we don't trust the people running our departments, then fire them. Get somebody else. I mean, that's the way I look at it. I, I just, too many, you know, too many people involved is not doing this town any good.
No, and I think, if I may, when I proposed that, I think looking at models in other communities, a lot of it is staffed. A lot of larger communities have a finance team and that's kind of how they staff it. Um, and so I think that there is definitely, in my head, I view it more as kind of a town administrator-formed committee. Um, but that we, as a select board, are putting legitimacy behind it and saying, especially now that we have the override that has passed and that we are saying we are working towards holding ourselves accountable and being as transparent, um, with, with the money that you've trusted us with, um, and how that's going.
Certainly good discussion for the meeting.
Yep.
Let me ask one, um, question for, and just more of a point of clarification for myself when it comes to the schools. What, where is the, call it the, the jurisdiction with regards to capital improvements with the town schools versus what comes through the district? Like what can we decide needs to be fixed or updated within our three Rutland schools that doesn't have to come through?
You want to answer that?
No, no, I'll let the chair.
Currently, the agreement in place says that thirty-five thousand dollars is the limit. So the school, the Wachusett, has to fix anything that costs less than thirty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Anything over thirty-five becomes a capital expenditure for the town.
Okay.
And that is where I see Justin saying, yes, let's know this stuff ahead of time, that we don't want to be blindsided for things that weren't able to get done under thirty-five all of a sudden became a bigger issue for us ahead. I like to be ahead of that stuff.
So is that something where anything that's over that fifty would just, it doesn't have to go anywhere through the district? We as a town can decide with the C I P C that this is an expenditure that we want to pursue?
Yeah, for example, um, uh, let's say, uh, a school needs to be updated.
Yeah.
And it's gonna cost a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That goes through the C I P C. It's a capital expenditure. We look at it and, and then rate it and then send it to the board or not send it to the board depending on where it fills in. We what, we try to work with Wachusett as much as possible. Uh, we work with their liaison down there in terms of their capital improvement. But we hope that, we hope that they will take care of things under the thirty-five, so only the important stuff that has to be done in a school is taken care of.
Okay.
So.
Where I'm kind of going with this is, it, yeah, the answer, where I'm kind of going with it though is I, I'm, I think there's a lot that we need to do for the schools that probably is over that fifty thousand. So I would be interested to know, and I feel like a lot of it, you know, we ask questions, but a lot of it does get kicked back because they want to see a, a whole district-wide, um, initiative, not just something, you know, we have a concern within our schools, how do we fix that without having to make sure? Like, I want every, every school to, you know, get what they need, but I don't want every school to have to get it approved all at the same time if we are able to put a plan in place for hours.
I'll give you an example. Uh, about two years ago, the school wanted to upgrade the football field. It's gonna cost about a million dollars. Our share was gonna be roughly a hundred thousand when it breaks down. Well, that was gonna be an improvement. That was over ten and lasts more than five years hopefully, so that came to the rust. But there was no feat, there was no background, there was not a lot of supporting information for us to rate it on that. It was just, we'd like you to support redoing the football field, you know, type of thing.
So Leah, as part of this committee, is that something that could be considered during the discussions on, like, specific to s- the schools coming up with their kind of long-term?
I think historically, the, the school hasn't done much long-term planning either. And I think this past year they did do some. I don't think they've communicated their plans very well to the towns. Um, and so I think providing that opportunity as far as they go into the, they go into our buildings and see what they think our buildings need, um, and it's not the same for every dis- for every building in the district. Um, but I think there is, this year definitely was an improvement in that, but as far as getting the word out and communicated to the towns, I think there is still a lot of room for improvement there. Um, and so part of my hope of having a, a dedicated piece to that is to have some of those conversations as well. Or, you know, we hear from our Rutland residents that you may not have this on your radar for the Rutland schools, but we hear from our Rutland residents that this is a priority. So how can we work together to get that or something? Um, so just know how to find the right. Yeah.
I'm not, I don't, I don't know that.
It's a tough one.
Yeah, the, the school committee would be the right liaison, if you will.
Right.
For something like that, so, okay, all right.
I think the administration is really the, the piece there, but.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Ross?
Um, Darren Ross again. Um, during our finance committee meetings this year, there's a new spirit of cooperation, um, with the new superintendent. I think Aus- Austin has already reached out and had some conversations with him. There's a whole bunch of things he can do for us and he's already given some money back, quote unquote, to the town. While our school committee members work really hard and they do a great job, they're kind of handcuffed. They get a budget and then they only approve it. So not saying that they're not doing their job, they, they do a great job of what they do, but they're kind of handcuffed. They get given a budget. So I think that we should strike while the iron is hot, Harry, and continue conversations with the new superintendent and his financial person because they seem to be a little bit more fair than past administrations. And they did fire a warning shot, Jen, that we're gonna be looking for a new school in Rutland soon, within the next couple of years. So that would come from a different, we would finance that a different way.
Right.
But they're already kind of, Rutland is at that point where they need a new school. So it's, it's, he wasn't afraid to bring that up in a meeting. He wasn't putting it down on our throat. But what he said was, oh, by the way, in a few years, you're gonna be needing a new school. So that's gonna be a whole nother process, but it's coming. And, and some of the schools that we have in town are a little long in the tooth. And that may be a point that there may be a renovation or it may be a whole new school like they did in Mountview. I don't know what they're planning, but they can also, you know, they'll let us know. And the other thing that with Harry's thirty-five thousand dollar limit, that's at their discretion. If they have extra cash at times, I know in the town of Holden, they've put more than thirty-five thousand and the town of Rutland put more than thirty-five thousand, but they use that as a benchmark where it schools to the town, just so you know. But they have a little bit of discretion. If they, if budgets are tight, it's thirty-five. If, if they've got a little extra and they can, they'll go up a little bit. They'll help. They've done that in the past, so.
I think my hope for this long-term financial planning committee is to really legitimize it and not just have it dependent on who our town administrator is and who's on, on the select board and, and different boards and commissions, but really kind of legitimize it and say that this is a priority. Um, we heard a lot throughout the, um, financial seminars that the library held and everything about the accountability and transparency piece, and, and I would like to try to see that away. Um, so that's kind of my hope for that.
It's, it kind of goes more towards, uh, us wanting to try and be more proactive versus reactive too. So if we're planning for these things, then we can be more transparent about that.
And I think I hear from the board kind of a consensus leaning towards it being more of a professional group, kind of staff and administration, um, versus the, the lay, laypeople, yeah. Does that?
Yeah, listen, all, through the chair, all I'm saying is, is people elect us for a reason. They elect us to make decisions.
Right.
If we keep kicking those decisions off to these committees with no authority.
Right.
Then what is this? They elected us. Let's make some decisions and talk to our experts in the fields, whatever the field, all the town departments, get together and, and let's, let's try and get some things done. I don't think you necessarily have to put together, you know, another committee where it just, it's more fluff. I'm sorry to put it that way, but that's what it is. You know, some of these committees just, I, I don't see them going anywhere, but.
Yeah, I guess, Tom, I have to agree with you.
Yeah, right. Yeah, right.
That, I'm not sure we need a, another committee, but we can certainly form some kind of a financial group to advise the board on these things without having a formal committee, because, like, you know, the concern is if you have a committee, then you have to have it staffed and is it a three-year term, a two-year term, or when, what do you do? And so maybe the details we can work out at our goal meeting versus here tonight, you know, but.
So then, well, it seems positive, we'll put it, continue working on it and maybe have a draft plan going into our goals meeting as to how that looks. Um, following on that, the Managed Growth Steering Committee. The current, uh, rate limitation, uh, development rate limitation bylaw is set to sunset or expire in, um, spring of twenty-twenty-four. We have the option as a town to vote to extend it, um, for one, one extension up to five years. The past, the way that bylaw was brought through was, uh, a, a town administrator-appointed, um, steering committee that worked with CMRPC for staff and the town planner. I had been a proponent of keeping that, that committee going to kind of look at benchmarks throughout to see how the, the bylaw had worked or didn't work, um, the pros, the cons, and, and what additional, um, steps could or could not be taken. Um, we have a lot of data coming out, kind of going into a, an additional agenda item of our master plan that, um, the town as a whole is still in favor of, of managing growth, how that looks. I think there's a few different options, um, there's a lot of, um, objectives in the master plan as to how to look towards that. Um, given the, the opening in our planning, um, office and, um, the kind of uncertainty with the planning board and everything, um, I, I had proposed potentially having a conversation about reforming a committee with very specific targeted aims um, to work through the master plan and look at some of those actionable items going into the, the twenty-twenty-four election or, um, town meeting where we would need to either take action or not to extend what we currently have and/or look at additional options. Um, so that's the, the conversation. Um, in the past, it was a representative from the select board, uh, the planning board, um, I think Hong Kong, um, Board of Health and, um, uh, staff from the, um, DPW were involved because we had done a, um, water and sewer moratorium because we had, uh, restrictions for what we could draw from Mashka Pog. Um, there's been conversation about involving AgCom, um, and Board of Assessors just as far as how, um, our open space can also be utilized, um, and assessors how, uh, it's impacting our tax rates, um, and income. Um, and then, um, we had staff support, like I mentioned, from DPW, the planning office, um, the building department, um, and obviously the town administrator's office, um, and then a couple of members at large from the public. Um, I don't know how this board feels about, I, I, I get the sense of another committee. Um, this would be a very kind of targeted committee, short-term, with a, a very specific goal, um, or objective, I guess, uh, charge, um, and hopefully some input from CMRPC, um, to kind of help guide that through technical, on the technical side. Um, so that's conversation for the board, we can think about it, put it on the agenda. For our boards and commissions, we can have a conversation about it, or for our, um, goal setting, we can have a conversation about it now as well.
I, for one, would like to postpone it to the goal, goal committee.
I was just gonna say that.
Yep.
Yeah, five at a time.
Yeah.
There's a thousand things here to discuss, so.
And, and I'd like to say one thing, we're in the process of hopefully hiring a DPW director, a new town planner, there's a lot of moving pieces. Uh, I, I think, we all, I think, have an idea of what needs to be done and our, you know, it's just a matter of dealing with our experts and dealing with town legal and just figuring out the legal way to go.
And I think it's something we, as a board, need to be mindful of, that spring, May twenty-twenty-four, our town elec- or town meeting is when this would need to be taken up. Um, so we don't have, uh, infinite amount of time, and so there's a lot of moving pieces, obviously, but we also would need, if we're going to go the committee route, we need to have a committee that's ready to, to hit the ground rolling and get going um, for that, because that's, um, when that bylaw is set to sunset. And if no action is taken, then that bylaw expires, um, and that's the thirty-six, um, essentially, uh.
Thirty-five lots a year or something?
Thirty, I think it's thirty-six, A and Rs, right, A and Rs, mostly A and Rs, new building permits that have not been grandfathered in. I think it's the appropriate way.
And I think, just as a, one of the important things I'd be looking at is how many building permits have already been grandfathered in that we have? And what effect would this have on, and do we have ten years' worth of old permits on there so that thirty-six won't make a big difference?
Oh, probably, you gotta be dealing with that, they've been cutting them.
Yeah, so that would be one of the things I'd be looking at.
Well, and that was part of kind of my original hope with this committee keeping going throughout the time that didn't happen was that we would have benchmark reviews as to what, what happened, what didn't happen. Um, and I know at Dave McCray's last department head update, he did give us an update, um, uh, currently, and I can pull those numbers out because that was obviously before the board, this board was formed, but we can, um, maybe Austin can get some information from the building inspector as far as, um, a little bit of a history there.
Would it, through the chair? Oh, is there a question? Go ahead.
I, I have a question. I've brought it up before. How many more, uh, gallons of sewer can go through the pipe? I think I'd find out, because don't forget, you've got thirty-something, thirty-six thousand gallons of reserve for the heights. You don't want it to overflow or, and, and all of a sudden there's sewer moratorium. But when you're going through it, I'd find out first what your capacity is, you know.
I would have a question, is how many more roads can the DPW service putting in another two, three hundred homes? I mean, everything has a, a limit of expansion.
Yeah, through the chair, I mean, I think everybody, we're all in agreement, the town's been overdeveloped. I don't think there's any question about, well, certainly, I don't think, I think, I hate to put it this way, I think in a lot of ways the damage has been done. And we, there's probably no way we can stop it, but there have to be legal ways we can slow it down. And that's all this is, slow it down so we can catch up, or at least try to catch up.
Become sustainable.
It may not be doable, but if we don't do that, you know, and the town, I guarantee you, if we put this before the town and we properly, like we did, we properly, you know, advertise it and get people informed, the town's gonna vote in favor of what, you know, measures to slow this down. I, I have no doubt of that, but.
I, I wouldn't mind saying, um, if we're gonna discuss it during the goals, if you had thoughts as to what those specific goals and the specific, well, I mean, obviously, we're kind of working on a one-year if timeline, but if there's specific goals that you want this committee to accomplish and specifics to look at, I think that would be helpful for, for driving that discussion.
I mean, I think a lot of it is just what we talked about here, kind of looking at that data retroactively, but then also what options we have. Um, and that's really working with CMRPC a lot, they have a lot of recommendations in the first phase that they had done, um, as far as potential additional options. Um, and then coming out of master plan, there's a lot of recommendations in master plan for, um, some of it is, would definitely be town meeting work. Um, some of it would potentially be more planning board, um, but if we don't have that support, um, then we would have to go to town meeting, I think.
One of the most frequently asked questions that I've been facing is, how many burning, uh, burning permits? Yeah, building permits are out there right now, okay? Where are we going with this? Is it, are they gonna be able to slow this down? We're gonna have to, you know, continue to look at the expansion that's coming at us? And so, you know, it's, it's a very popular subject with the people.
Absolutely. Is, through the chair, is it possible for you to pull up some of that information for us for next Thursday?
Sure.
Okay, I, I guess in my mind, I'd like to see, how effective has this managed growth policy been since it was enacted? And what are the changes that are being recommended through the master plan, what we're doing, and what kind of effect that might have? I, I mean, I'm one that, yes, I, I like the idea of this, I just don't wanna waste my time in futility if it doesn't mean much. If we really can't do much with what we're doing here, so I'd like to see how it affected it where we are right now. How many, we have thirty-seven a year permits allowed, how many homes have been built during that time?
Yeah, really, seventy-something.
So.
All right, so, um, moving on, so we'll look at that, continue to look at that, um, at our goals and objectives and possibly beyond as well. But it sounds like there's definitely consensus in, in moving forward with, with something. Um, master plan update, I just wanted to put out there, um, the master plan, the final draft is done and it's available online. Um, I think Austin just got it up on, um, the homepage. Um, and if not, if you go to Boards and Commissions under Master Plan Steering Committee, um, on the right-hand side under News and Announcements, there's a Town of Rutland Master Plan twenty-twenty-three. Um, it's a, it's a long document, we are soliciting feedback. Um, there should be a Google form available as well as an email address that you can, um, provide feedback either by section, if you would like, um, or just in the whole entirety of it all. Um, it's been a work over the past few years with a, a number of individuals, um, CMRPC and Dave George, um, the, our previous planner, um, were really involved in that on the staff side. Um, and this is really, we have a, a hope that, um, on the implementation side, that this really becomes something that all boards, elected boards, commissions, um, committees, staff, everybody kind of looks to and refers to because the previous one, I think, was done in twenty-two, in two thousand, I think, right?
Two thousand.
And I didn't even know it existed, um, it has sat on a shelf forever. Um, and so we're really hoping that this becomes more of a living document and, and is referred to, um, as a guide for, for town. Um, so I just wanted to get that out there, please, um, I think it's open for a month, we'll be soliciting feedback, we really want the feedback. CMRPC is collating all of that feedback. Um, we, the committee will look together at the feedback, make recommend, recommend the, recommended changes. Um, and then Planning Board has the final si- sign-off authority and will file it with the state. It has to be approved by the state as well. So, um, we're hoping by the beginning of the fall, um, we're there. So I just wanted to get that out there. Um, Austin has approached by Wachusett Watershed for a buy recycled policy, which, um, if the town were to officially adopt, um, could open us up to the opportunity for a number of, um, DEP and EPA grants and, and funding, I think, so Austin, if you wanna.
Sure, yeah, so, uh, so in your packet is a draft, uh, policy. Title is recycled product procurement policy, so it, uh, is this policy that's set forth to town departments for, um, where feasible, trying to procure, um, material that is of, uh, at least some sort of a recycled nature. So if it's paper or, or other, uh, products that are procured by town departments, you know, some sort of, um, um, you know, recycled content that's included in those products. Candidly, I think we're doing a lot of it anyways, we're just not getting credit for it, um, because we don't have a policy. So this policy is, um, is one of the several requirements for some of the grants that, uh, that we had mentioned, so, um, the particular grant that we're looking to go for, uh, will actually offset our annual assessment to Wachusett Earth Day, so, um, you know, just about fifty percent, so if we're able to get that grant, save some money on the budget as well. Uh, but also, um, there's other opportunities to be able to purchase some of these recycled materials with these grant funds as well, so. But again, you know, what's critical, I think, in this is, uh, sometimes when you're buying green materials, sometimes they're not economically feasible for town departments, so there's language in here to make sure that it beats our, any sort of quality requirements that we may have, but also making sure that they're reasonable prices in terms that are still advantageous to town departments.
So I had asked, whenever poli- whenever possible, that for policies especially, that we do kind of a first reading and then a second reading. So this is just the first reading, it's just the first time it's brought to our attention, um, similar to kind of even setting the committees and, and conversations as well. So, um, I just want to provide the board the opportunity to, to hear the background of it, have the policy, spend some time, read it, um, send any feedback, if you have any questions or comments, concerns right now, happy to hear them. Um, and if you wanna spend a little bit more time, send it to Austin, um, to Mika and Austin directly, and then we can do a second reading and hopefully then, um, a- adopt it, um.
I do have a question for you.
Sure.
There are a few things in here, I have questions, but for, one is, is this the basic template that pretty much everybody uses?
Pretty much, yeah, this is the, kind of the draft policy that's provided by Master EP.
Okay, and I'll ask you the other questions offline.
Okay.
Um, I do know a lot of, uh, procurement sites do advertise, um, that it's however much recycled or post-consumer material or whatever. So I think it's just being aware of that, and to Austin's point earlier, a lot of what is already being done, we are doing, purchasing those items. Oftentimes, they're, um, an economical option as well, and so just that we have a policy and we get credit for that then.
Yeah.
So if we can, um, ideally add it to our next agenda, the twenty-sixth, for a second reading, unless there's any significant major, um, things to come before, does that work?
Mm-hmm, that's good. Thanks, Josh.
Um, and then we have a liquor license, um, to sign the liquor license for Barahi Foods, which is Rutland Marketplace. I think that this was one that we knew was coming, um, as it made its way through the, after the sale and through the State, um, Licensing Commission. So to Mika, do you have any?
Is it a full liquor license or just beer and?
Uh, so it's beer and wine.
Beer and wine.
Yep, to be sold and consumed off premises.
Okay.
The prior board approved the liquor license at April, April eighteenth public hearing. Um, it then went to the ABCC and went through their process, and on Friday, they issued their approval. Um, this is the last step that they need to be able to complete the sale.
Okay.
So of the business, so, um, the, the last step for the board is just to sign the license.
So it's not changing anything that is already being done at Rutland Marketplace? It's just basically transferring ownership from, from Scotty and, um, from the Leonard's to the, the new entity, Barahi?
Exactly, everything is staying the same, the sale hours are staying the same, and they'll still be responsible for redoing that license at the end of the calendar year.
So I'll take a motion to sign.
Uh, make a motion to sign liquor license for Bara- bleh, sorry, Barahi Foods, which is the old Rutland Marketplace.
Second.
Motion and a second, questions, comments, concerns? Harry, let's go.
Second, yeah.
Matt said yes.
Uh, Legeride.
Yalvanai.
Waitmanai. Um, I had already mentioned a few times, um, that, that, that the, this board's twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four Select Board Goals and Objectives Meeting um, is scheduled for next week, Thursday, July twenty-second at six PM here. Um, it will do a roundtable, it'll be a little bit more informal, sorry, June, not July, sorry, guys. Next Thursday is June twenty-second, um, at six PM here, um, and it'll be a little bit more informal conversation. Um, we already have some ideas put out there, so that's great. Um, is there any future agenda items that anyone has currently, um, form, like, rolling around in their heads?
I have a couple, um, one, I, so I, being a new board, I actually attended a select board training this past Friday, just to get some more. How am I gonna do this job? Um, one of the things I learned, there was a lot of topic on executive session meeting minutes, and, um, the MMA states that we should be reviewing those regularly to determine whether or not they are appropriate for releasing, posting. So I wanted to see if that was something the board was willing to consider, if, if it's, if it's held frequently, they say, do it on a quarterly basis. Otherwise, thirty to sixty days after executive session, determine if it's. So I just wanted to bring it here, see if that's something that we might want to periodically put on an agenda to review and post if appropriate, release.
Have the old boards, any of the old boards done that?
So, no, historically not, historically, we do meet in executive session periodically, um, probably, maybe, probably quarterly at least because there's usually some sort of negotiation or contract or, or something coming up. Um, but I think that this board, um, definitely seems to have made a commitment to try to, to be a little bit more, um, forthcoming with those. But I think that this board definitely seems to have made a commitment to try to, to be a little bit more forthcoming with those, those minutes and everything, and so I'm totally open to if we don't have a, a purposeful reason. I think Tamika and I also learned that the minutes, if there's no conversation about the minutes, the minutes can be approved in an open session. And so they don't necessarily, we don't necessarily have to go into executive session to approve minutes and determine if they're released or not. So we can always do that in open session.
I think that's a great idea, Jen. I think we do need to reevaluate those, so.
Just more transparency.
Yeah. Good.
For sure. Thank you.
And the other thought I had, again, and I haven't read through this in too much detail, I'm going to say thank you to Tamika and Becky for providing me our financial policies. But I had some questions on this, and in the actual financial policies itself, it states that these would be reviewed annually, and it doesn't look like these have been reviewed in at least six years. And I kind of was looking through some, call it other towns, other examples, what do they have written in financial policies? I think there's some things that we could help clarify how money is spent. You know, what are certain funds used for, kind of clarify some of that. So again, I wanted to bring it here, see if there's something that we can review, update. I don't know if this would fall into any of that Long-Term Financial Planning Committee to review or look at potentially updating, but just wanted to.
Through the chair, is that going to be worked into the new website? I mean, is, so that the, everything is easier for the public to, to review?
That's the goal, everything, whether it's finding documents, policies, applying for a job. Everything, ideally, yeah.
I think, I think for sure, Jen, that's huge. Thanks for bringing that up. I think there's a lot of policies. I don't think Rutland has a lot of policies, and I think the policies that we do have, definitely, many of them are not current.
And even the formatting, I said, just trying to go through this and, and understand what is the policy, what is it for, what's its purpose, you know? How can this money be spent in this area? And I think we're lacking in a lot of, of areas of documenting as well, so I think it would be worthwhile to.
Happy to add that, you know, kind of policy review and start maybe with the financial policies. Jen, if you have comments based on your training and everything, you know, jot notes down or whatever, and we can.
As long as it's not a no committee.
But, yeah, I think, for sure. Anybody else?
Yeah, I, we've been, we've been discussing bylaws for so long that I'd like to see us start acting on some of them, and start working on it. Pick one, pick two, and let's start working on it.
A couple of them. Don't have to do them all.
Right. Don't have to do them all.
I think I just heard Peter cheer.
I was going to say the same thing, Harry. Yeah, just two, a couple of them.
That's all.
Just, just baby steps, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe we can do like a policy and a bylaw or a meeting or something, depending on how things are going, for sure. Definitely. Very cool. I appreciate the, the feedback and the comments, and by all means, always feel free to, if you have other things that pop in your head, you know, let Tamika or Austin know. I like to be kept in the loop, just again, not generally that I'm going to absolutely say no, but it's a, a placement thing and kind of might make more sense as new budget season starts, or we have staff transitioning, or we want to have a conversation about it without definitely moving forward, like a few of these items tonight. And so I appreciate that dialogue, for sure. I don't think we have any correspondence. I don't have any other business. And I just wanted to call attention to our future meetings, Thursday, June 22nd, again, is our goal and objectives meeting. And then we have a regular scheduled meeting on June 26th, and then July 10th, after the Fourth of July, so that's how we're looking for right now. Before we bolt, we have signatures to get. Please don't just bolt without getting signatures.
You said that, right?
Um, hearing that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn? Second?
Any questions, comments, concerns? Harry.
Yay!
Paul. Paul, do you want to adjourn, Paul? Paul, Paul, do you want to adjourn?
Yeah. Why not? Galvin eye.
Whitman eye. And we're done.